One, I'd like to declare the Liverpool City Council meeting for the 13th of December 2023 officially open. To start today's proceedings, I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, that the meeting will be live streamed other than the public forum section. To start off today's proceedings, I would like to invite Pastor Stephen Reddish from the New Life Christian Ministries to read the acknowledgement to country and offer a prayer for council. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And thank you very much, Pastor Reddish, for your kind words and your warm prayers for us all here at council. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we are with obviously the heat that we're going through. We'll do what we can to get the air conditioning going as good as we can, but in the meanwhile, if anybody wants to feel free to relax themselves from ties or jackets, please feel free to do so, free and easy for our Christmas meeting. Hopefully, it's full of plenty of splendid spirit and joyfulness. Indeed, indeed. And I think, as was just pointed out to me, I think this is, this looks like it's going to be the last council meeting in this building. So it has served us well for many, many years. Now, councillors, we have two councillors who are attending remotely, councillor Kineb and the deputy mayor, councillor McNutt. Can I, I move that way, be accepted to be?
Move that way, seconded?
Moved, seconded. All those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We don't have any apologies. There is unfortunately one condolence motion regarding Mr Sam Habib, Saleem Habib. It is with great sadness that I offer my deepest condolences to the family of Saleem Sam Habib. Sam's journey was not just a testament to longevity, but a story of resilience, hard work, and unwavering commitment to his family. Sam's life was a story of triumph against the odds. He was a devoted and loving person who lived for his family. He was always there for his parents and siblings. He stayed in Blous and Lebanon until he was 21 to help his mum with the younger children and came to Australia in 1959. Sam arrived in Australia with nothing but the money in his pocket and the determination in his heart. Sam worked extremely hard, from working in the family store during the day to the steel factory of an evening. He then moved into construction with his brother Herb, qualified for a builder's licence, going on to build apartment blocks. Sam met the love of his life Christine, and they were married in 1967. Together, they moved to Austral in the early 70s. A short time later, Sam's younger brother, Harry, moved in with them, and they started working on cars in the shed. This was the beginning of what is now known today as Habib Brothers Truck, Car and Smash Repairs in Austral. Sam built his business from the ground up, starting with one small shed and expanding it to become one of the most reputable smash repairs in the state, working with the likes of Fox Trucks and Channel 7. The addition of Carl and Joe to the team solidified Habib Brothers as a family endeavour. Habib Brothers Trucking Car Smash Repairs forms part of the landscape in Austral and till today is still well known and respected. Sam was not just a businessman, he was a gentleman, a great host and a generous soul. He was always the life of the party and looked and liked a good time, with some of his famous phrases being, "Be happy or sing a song." He was a loyal husband for 54 years, a loving father to Charlie, Sam, Christina, Camilla, and the best grandfather to his many grandchildren. Sam was bid farewell at St Anthony's Austral on Friday the 2nd of December. His legacy is not just in the success of his achievements, but in the values instilled in so many around him. A man of few words but with profound action, a beacon of hard work and a role model to many. May he rest in unpaternal peace. I'd like to move that we held a, could I invite everyone to please stand for a minute Next, I'm the confirmation of the minutes of the previous council meeting held on the 22nd of November. Can I have a mover? Move councillor Green, second and councillor Moon?
Happy to move.
Modification.
Yep, councillor Haral.
Interested. On MoU, the emergency, the motion of urgency, O1?
Yes.
It's declared, it's being put down as councillors voted unanimously for that.
Yep.
I actually abstained from voting on that. I don't agree with some of the wording. While I broadly agree with it, I disagree with some of the wording.
Yep, nice. Yep, if that can be reflected, please. Thank you councillor Haral. Sorry, deputy mayor, did you indicate anything otherwise?
No, sorry, I was just going to second the motion, that's all.
All right, thank you. Great. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. Are there any declarations of interest?
Yep, I have one, the usual COM O1 grants. I've had dealings in my capacity as a member of parliament with a number of those organisations, non-significant, non-procurnary, and I'll stay in the chamber.
Thank you. I'm going to be declaring a non-procurnary less significant interest on Plan 01 and Plan 02, only that I've indicated a strong position and support of both of these projects before and potentially could be achieved as being biased towards them. It's non-procurnary, it's less significant, however, I will be leaving the room. Any other ones?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Also, non-procurnary, but will be leaving the chamber, Plan O1 and Plan O2. I had provided previous advice to an adjoining owner prior to becoming CEO of this council.
Thank you. Any other further ones? We'll now move, if there's no further declarations, I'll now move into the public forum. We have two speakers here today. Firstly, I'd like to invite Ms Pamela Roderida, who would like to address council on the planning proposal for 93 to 145 Hoxton Park Road. For those poignant words, and can we say thank you very much to you and to your whole family for the contributions that you all have made together? I know that it's a family affair and it's, and I'm sure we've had the condolence motion before, and I'm sure council will look, will do what it's can to honour Alison and your whole family for your contributions to the area. We now move into the agenda.
Sorry, Mayor, I was just wondering if I could make a short statement before we kick off?
Yes, councillor, go for it.
Yep. It has been an honour to serve on Liverpool City Council for the last seven years. To date, I have successfully represented this community as a councillor and the member for Leppington. However, I was recently appointed the government whip in the Legislative Assembly, and due to these additional commitments and responsibilities, I have made the tough decision to resign as a councillor. With only nine months until next year's local government elections, it is my strong expectation that Liverpool fire the lead of all other councils across New South Wales and leave the position vacant for the remainder of the term. It would cause unnecessary costs and inconvenience to local residents and ratepayers to hold a by-election. Local government works best when we pursue the interests of the community above all else. When that doesn't occur, mayors, councillors and councils find themselves in the media for all the wrong reasons. As a councillor, the most satisfying times were when the system worked, residents saw a problem, picked up the phone, and the issue was sorted. However, it is during the toughest of times that we have seen the best of our community. I was particularly proud to have stood up, spoke out and played my part as we dealt with the grave impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on our region. I especially want to thank the hardworking staff at Liverpool City Council, both past and present, and I also thank my fellow councillors for their contributions over the years. It has been a privilege to serve the community alongside you. So I have a resignation letter here, which after consultation with the CEO is, will take effect from Friday, 5pm, so just a couple of days to wrap things up, but I have made the very tough decision to resign from council. And this will be my last meeting. Thank you.
You can have an early mark if you want. Thank you councillor Hagerty for that, and allow me to be the first to congratulate you on your, on your effort and your works into serving the Liverpool community on Liverpool council. There is, ultimately, I think everyone gets into this for the right reasons, to make a difference, and it's, and congratulate you for your work and effort for seven and a bit years, right? Seven years, three months, I'd say roughly, something like that. So congratulations on your work and effort for Liverpool council or for the community. We want to wish you all the very best for your future endeavours. Hope that you have an exciting time in parliament. It'd be good if it didn't finish at 1am, if you can help, if you can help a bit with that, if you can help with that. And we, yeah, wish hopefully that you continue to work with Liverpool council for the best interest of the community as a whole, and we'll try to find common ground whenever we can possibly. So well, congratulations and well done. Anyone else want to say something nice about Nathan? Councillor Hagerty?
Yes, if I may, Mr Mayor.
Yes, deputy mayor.
Thank you, I just wanted to echo what you just said and congratulate councillor Hagerty on his recent promotion and on his new role. It's been a pleasure to work with him, it's been fun for the last two years. I look forward to continuing to work in that, in your new role, and thank you for what you've done for the people of Liverpool, and all the best with your future.
Yeah, Nathan, it's been a big journey, and I remember when you first came to council, and like me, we went off and did the director's course at local government. And although we haven't always agreed on many occasions, I do respect you for what you do do for the community, and I wish you well.
Yes, I would like to echo some of those sentiments. As a colleague and a friend, I thank you for, not only your contribution to council, but I also thank you for your support in my journey as a first-term councillor in showing the ropes in the way. I have full confidence that you will serve the people of Leppington as studiously and as diligently as you have the constituents of Liverpool.
Councillor Haral?
Yes, I'd like to say the same. I've worked with councillor Nathan Hagerty for seven odd, same time, seven odd years, and during that period, while we don't always agree, mostly we agree, it's been a pleasure working with him. He has been an example to the rest of the councillors as to how to behave in council meetings, and quite often, yes, quite often, I've noticed, you know, we all tend to sometimes get a little bit upset, me in particular, but I've rarely seen Nathan do that. So, good on him, I think he's been a well worth addition to council over all those years, and I obviously wish him very well in parliament, and I'm sure he does an excellent job representing our community. So thank you for all those years. Thanks, Nathan.
Mayor?
Yeah, councillor Caliander? Are you announcing your resignation as well?
Sorry?
Are you announcing your resignation as well?
You can live in hope, ma'am. Look, as I said in my inaugural speech to the New South Wales Parliament, we both started out on Moore Street, representing the people of Liverpool, LGA together. Now we've sort of, obviously have, have transferred that representation into, into a different space, but I also think it's quite significant that on the day of our final meeting here in this place, that councillor Hagerty wraps up his role as a councillor. It has been a very, sort of, it's been a long but short seven and a bit years. There has, I think, you know, when you stop and reflect on all of the various things our community and we have faced as representatives of the community, I echo councillor Haral's sentiments in saying that councillor Hagerty has always represented himself in the most ethical and credible manner in this place. He has always put the interests of the residents of Liverpool and our community and what is best for the long-term interests of our community ahead of, you know, many, many things. And, you know, in, in public representation, there are lots of people who go into it for, you know, for perhaps not the most noble of reasons. That is not the case with councillor Hagerty. I know he will continue to serve the people of Leppington in the New South Wales Parliament with the utmost of integrity and credibility as he has done in this place. I wish him well, and I thank you for your, your friendship, for your comradeship, and for all of the effort and everything that you've put into Liverpool over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hadid?
What can I say? You will be missed, my friend. You will be missed. Over the last almost 70 years, we had a very nice time working together, Nathan. Well, as you know, sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree, but we always maintain the respect. And I wish you all the best on your new role, and I believe someone in the future will nominate you for the Order of Liverpool City Council for your great and appreciated contribution to the community in Liverpool. All the best.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, councillor.
It's really amazing that this is your last meeting and having Robert McGarrett speak to us today. I try, I will, I will hold it, but the three of us are here because of Alison, because of her mentorship, and because of her passion to share knowledge and to support future candidates for local state and state government. So our debt is also paid to Alison as well, I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you councillor Green, it's lovely.
On another note, I do have an urgency motion, Mr Chair?
Yes, councillor?
Given that this is the last council meeting, scheduled meeting of the year, I would like to place a motion for independent third-party legal advice, if into the status of the Project Control Committee. Whilst the committee was established to provide oversight and guidance on the design, planning and execution of all council infrastructure projects funded by 711 developer contributions, I think it is imperative for independent legal advice to be sought to determine and clarify a number of concerns, to address any possibility that the Project Control Committee could be considered as operational in nature, context, status and further, to address any potential serious risk to councillor involvement in operational decision-making, particularly those decisions linked to Section 711 developer contributions. So given that the next scheduled meeting is not going to occur before February for the council meeting, I think it's imperative that the legal advice be urgently sought prior to any further meeting or convening of the Project Control Committee, just to ensure that all the boxes are ticked.
Yep, so what's the, what's the actual motion?
That the council direct the CEO, to see it up on the screen, to seek independent legal advice to determine the legality and legitimacy of the project committee in its charter, purpose, function and operation, to provide advice to the consistency of the Project Control Committee with the Local Government Act of 1993 in terms of councillor role, responsibilities and function, and further that the advice should also address the issue of risk of public perception of councillor conflict of interest in councillors being actively involved in the overseeing, monitoring and/or allocation in determining any project or funding, subsequent allocation of Section 711 developer contribution funds.
Yeah, look, I'm happy to, I'm happy to accept it as urgency, but can you just clarify on the point three, just on the legality?
Yep.
So are you saying that, can we just bring that back up, please, if that's all right? So, sorry, let's do it officially, so I'm happy to accept it as urgency. Do you have a mover, do you have a second for the motion? Second, councillor Caliander? Great, okay. So just from a legal point of view, to ensure that we have an appropriate motion that doesn't breach anything, the risk of public perception of councillor conflict of interest in councils being actively involved in the overseeing and monitoring, allocation, determination in any project, okay. So I just have a question about that.
Sure.
I'm happy to refer to the CEO and all that. In order for council to spend any money, right, do you have any delegation to spend any money, or is that a decision of council?
So, short answer, Mr Mayor, is this, under the delegation afforded to me, I have delegation to spend certain amounts of money in certain circumstances, however, in other circumstances, it's a matter for council to be able to make that determination. Happy to refer to general counsel. I don't have the delegation papers in front of me, but as you recall, the delegation papers kind of do it in the reverse, where it says, "I'm allowed to do everything that council can do except in certain circumstances," and it mentions an amount not exceeding. General counsel, if you want to add to that?
Can I just add a couple of points, if that's okay? So the first is, broadly speaking, the questions which councillor Green has asked to be addressed are questions which the CEO has asked me to give some advice on. I have not yet done that, in the process of preparing internal advice. So that is a consideration you might like to take into account, you could look at that advice and then consider whether you wanted further advice. Secondly, I can take, obtain an estimate on how much that advice would cost, depending upon the amount it may be possible to accommodate it within the budget that I manage in terms of external legal support.
Do you want to speak for your motion? Because I'm just going to pull something up by councillor Green. Feel free to go for it.
I thought that I had, but I guess it's something that I have not been comfortable with for quite some time, and at the recent Local Government New South Wales Conference, I posed the model and question to several other councillors, and some were mayors, and asked them would they go to that particular meeting, and all, that was all in the negative. So that raised further discomfort for me. You know, I can only say that for me to attend that meeting, I need to be assured that it is, that it is legal, that it is consistent with my councillor role, responsibilities and functions, that I'm not being asked to step outside those, but more so for public perception, you know, to have that very clear, that, you know, that if it's in the other way, that no, it's all fine, well then I can, I'll make that argument to people and provide that answer if that is so. At the moment, I am unable to do that, which is the, I guess, a key reason that I would feel much more comfortable in being able to know very clearly that the Project Control Committee is, is a legitimate and legal activity for, and it's not operational, that councillors can be involved in.
So I just got to, just got to point something out there. So in you asking that, you are implying that the council, in establishing the committee, has acted outside of its, outside of the act? Because they could, they're not, they're not able to establish?
I'm not implying that. I'm not implying that. What I guess what I'm asking for, the independent legal advice would be, would clarify that and make it really clear as to that, that everything's okay, or if there's something that needs to be tweaked or changed for that committee to function or to be disbanded, one of the two, that, that... That, that's what the legal advice would be for, just to make, make sure. But I'm not, I'm not casting any aspersion or implying that, you know, that, of, you know, that, that it's, it's not kosher. I'm just saying for me, I don't feel comfortable and I would prefer to have, be able to stand on solid legal ground that everything's okay.
Yep, so just, I, I think there's actually, happy to, once again, happy to get the advice? Hmm, yeah. More than happy to, but council, I just need you, I need you to be mindful and everyone of some of the basic reading that we all should do, which is the act. So under section 377, council has issues they can, things they can delegate. What they cannot delegate is, and I'll quote it exactly, exactly, the voting of money for expenditure on its works, services or operations. So whilst the CEO does have delegation to approve tenders up to a certain amount, which is what he's referring to, he can only spend once we have allocated the money as part of our budgeting process. So contributions is part of that. The CEO cannot say, I want to go out there and build a bridge or build, build a road without council resolving to do that in the first instance. So I think to say, when you're looking at that part of it, like it's blatantly clear in section 377 what our role is. And I think I just am concerned that if councils, if councils haven't grasped that. Now, the question is, how would you like to go about doing that? Are you happy just to get once a year a document that fat that has all the projects on it? Or do we turn around and use the expenditure of the, of the contributions? We've come across an issue at the moment, if you look at Austral councillor, there's $80 million sitting in contributions for Austral that have not been expended, you know? And that's, that's concerning for the community because that's the community's park. We don't, councils don't have, a lot of councils don't have money for parks. We have the money, it just hasn't been spent. So just before I go to you, I'll just, the deputy mayor has a hand up and I'll give you the right of reply in a moment. Yes, deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to suggest that considering we've just heard from our own legal council that he is preparing a response to this kind of information, maybe we wait to get that information before we allocate funding to further information, before we know what the initial information is coming from our own legal council, whose, whose direction we, we listen to before we, you know, make, make decisions. That was my, my only query, that we could get that information in the break. It doesn't need to wait till the first meeting.
Are you saying deputy mayor, rather than get into, external advice, just get from the internal, from our general counsel?
I understood from what general counsel said before that he had already been asked to, to make a response to these queries, but hadn't done so yet. So I'm asking that we wait until we get that response. So that can come in the form of an email, it doesn't need to come at a meeting. And then we can move forward based on what we hear there, rather than spending funds before we know we need to.
Yeah, so councillor Green, can I ask you, are you happy with getting it just from internally? Or do you want, from our own general counsel? Or do you want it from an external?
I'm happy to wait for our own general counsel.
Yep.
That's the majority. I'm wondering when, you know, this is now what, the 13th of December? So we're not going to hear back until what, the end of January? And not until, I guess, the first meeting in February for the council meeting, I imagine?
Can, can I ask the CEO, when, when would the general counsel have some advice back to council? If it was done internally?
I think that's a question we should ask the general counsel in fairness with the, the. But in doing that, general counsel, take in mind that we would need the advice before the next committee meeting, so that if there is any specific, to quote the councillor's words, of tweaking, we can ensure that happens before.
So when I last inquired about the date of the next meeting, there wasn't one. There may have been one scheduled since, but I was targeting the 19th of January.
Yep. So you'd have, you'd have advice to us, to the CEO by around, you're aiming to have it around that 19th of January time?
Yes.
Yep, great. Are you happy with that with councillor Green? Great.
Yep, okay, yep.
So does that mean, does that now the meet? To change the first point, to seek independent legal advice, to say?
Just take out the word independent.
Hmm?
Take out the word independent.
Take out independent and after legal advice from general counsel. So it should read to seek legal advice from general counsel.
I'd be happy with that.
Done.
No problems. All right, a secondary happy with that? Cool, any other further discussion on the matter? Great, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. I declare unanimous. Okay, next item, mayoral report on page 58, tab 1, with the recommendation on page 59.
And of course it refers to the letter on 60 and 61.
And I'm happy to move that way, is any discussion?
I'm happy to move that way as per the recommendation in the book.
Mayoral report, kind of mayoral minute. A mayoral minute with plenty of notice.
Was.
With plenty of notice. So any discussion?
Yeah, just, I still care. I just want to make that point, I still care. It's come to my attention that other councils post their mayoral minutes two days before the meeting and I, and I found it fantastic that this came with, with the actual books beforehand and we didn't have 15 or 20 minutes to go over it. But I'd like to commend the mayor on, on putting this up early and I hope we can see more of that going, or you guys can see more of that going forward.
That was kind of because we didn't have much time last meeting, so.
Yes, it was left over from the last council meeting.
We endeavour to be as much organised as we can councillor Hagerty, but yes, you, you, I, I, I hear your point and we'll do what we can on that matter. Doesn't need a secondary, it's a, as a mayoral minute, doesn't need a secondary. Any discussion? All those in favour? Against? Declare unanimous. Okay. I do have one mayoral minute regarding the community forums that have been held. Over the course of the last two months, council has conducted a series of community forums. These forums have been about sitting with the community and listening to their concerns, ideas and suggestions. Beyond the ground and understanding their perspectives and experiences is crucial for effective governance and decision-making. The significance of these forums lies in the role as a platform for residents to express their thoughts directly to the council. It's essential that this listening translates into action. Council is committed to not only hearing, but also acting upon the feedback received, ensuring that the community's concerns shape policies and initiatives. Moving forward, we will continue to value and integrate the insights gained from these forums, working collaboratively to bring out positive change that truly reflects the needs and aspirations of our community. On the Green Valley, Ashcroft, Busby, Green Valley, Hecanburgh, Hinchbrook, Sadler, which was held on the 30th of October, the issues raised, I won't list them all, I won't go through them all, but you can see them that are, that are all there. And likewise for Edmondson Park, Middleton Grange, Voyager Point. So councillors, what I'd like to move is that council bring, we, the CEO bring back a report to the February meeting with an update on the actions taken on these issues, raise of the community forums. Any discussion?
Just one thing, looking at this, some of the things are fairly obvious to people as to what the intention of the information or the, what the points are about. On other ones, I think just the heading, it doesn't really say what was the issue.
Look, this could be, as you know, there's, there was been a lot of effort put into the meetings. And I'd say I want to, I want to thank the staff for their significant contribution to the process with their time and effort, not only people in regards to community engagement, but also with respect to the, them being there from all different facets of council, so they can have the technical experts working with the community. So what I'm getting, what I'm getting at is they could, this could be, this could have been 20 pages long or it could have been very bullet points, but I'm sure the staff are aware of the issues and we will, we'll continue to work on them. We are developing a format to simplify and get as easy to understand, trying to get these to one pages as our sort of to-do list for our community. But I'm sure a lot of us have heard these issues, whether it's through the forums who attended or whether it's through our emails or through Facebook. I guess we, we, a lot of this is new, but also not new.
So then am I to presume that point? On the third page, point two at the top of the page, ratio about ration of residents to roads, is that ratio of residents to roads? And happy to accept what is written here.
Which question, where was that, sorry again?
The third page, second point.
The third page, second point. Question about ration of residents to roads, yes, so we, no, I think you'd be right. Take away the, take away the end there. No rationing of roads yet.
So the point is that they've got too many people for the number of roads there are.
I think the issue was, the issue was raised about, yeah, what is the, yeah.
Perhaps the explanations will come out in what is provided further to that as to how it's addressed.
That, that was more about, I guess, the growth in the town centre and the, and traffic impacts. Deputy mayor?
Now it makes sense.
Mr Mayor, I understand that this is just a summary of what's gone on obviously and that all of those requests were processed and are available through TRIM. So I guess if there's anything else that needs clarification, all of that information does exist officially anyway for people to access, am I correct?
Sorry, can you say the last bit a little bit slower, the question part of it?
Sorry, so if there's anything that people need and want teased out of this summary, all of that is available through TRIM anyway, because that's where all the processed, requests have been processed.
Yes, correct, deputy mayor, yeah.
Thanks.
Any other further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare it unanimous. Okay, great. Now we now move on to plan 01 and plan 02. As, as I indicated, I've been on a keen of a significant interest. The deputy mayor, I don't know if you want to try chairing from there or have a crack?
Mr Mayor, it's just a little bit difficult to see people's hands raised and things like that. So if there is someone who's prepared to take that on, I'd be happy to, to delegate to that person.
Do you want to, do you want to just maybe try and then if anyone, yeah, send a stream out? See how we go?
Yep.
Yep, okay. If not, I'm sure. All right, and we have a technical difficulty with the live stream, but that's all. All right, great, so I'll hand over to the deputy mayor. If there's an issue, then we'll maybe get, I think we have an experienced hand in councillor Haddad who can do the job or any of the councillors, but I'll, I'll leave you to it. She's going to try, deputy mayor, both of us.
So is someone sitting in for the CEO as well?
Happy to move plan 01 as per the book, deputy mayor.
I was going to say, I just can't see the page number that it's on, but we're, we're now looking at plan 01, which is the planning proposal to amend the Liverpool LEP at lot 3 of 146 New Bridge Road, Moorbank, George's Cove Marina with a recommendation on page, and someone will have to help me with that page number because I can't see it on the screen.
Deputy mayor, that's page 66.
Page 66, thank you, and moved by councillor Rhodes.
68. Sorry, the recommendation's on page 68, my apologies.
Thank you, the recommendation on page 68, moved by councillor Rhodes, seconded by, and you'll have to yell out so I can hear.
Peter Hall.
Councillor Hall, thank you very much. So I put the motion, all those in favour. Against, and I will have to rely on the acting CEO to count.
Uh, yes, declare it carried.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to plan 02.
Sorry, deputy mayor, sorry, deputy mayor, if we could just.
We need to record that, don't we?
Yes, please, they've asked to be recorded, thank you.
So if I could ask everybody who voted in favour to raise their hand please, so it can be recorded?
You can move on to the ones that.
Thank you, and those against?
Are those against?
Yes, that's on, that's coming up onto the screen now.
Something wrong, acting CEO. Now you should, two councillors should be vouching in the negative, councillor Hagerty and councillor Calianda, because they did not raise their hand.
That's, that's.
It's hard to say, because.
That's been reflected on the screen now, I can see. Okay, thank you.
Well, deputy mayor, let me remind everyone, if you don't raise your hand, which is meaning you're vouching in the negative.
Okay, we've done that.
Thank you councillor, councillor Haddad, that's correct. Thank you, we'll move on to plan 02 now, which is a planning proposal to amend the Liverpool LEP Plan 2008 at lot 2, New Bridge Road, Moorbank, with a recommendation on page, again, I'll need a hand with that page number.
Sorry, page 87, 87.
Page 87.
Happy to move.
Do I have a mover of the recommendation? Thank you councillor Rhodes, do I have a secondary? I can't see, someone will have to help me with that one, I'll have a second. Councillor Moon, thank you very much. Okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hand. And if I can ask the acting CEO to count for me, please?
Yes, unanimous.
Thank you, and we'll list that as unanimous.
And we'll ask our mayor and our CEO to be able to.
And if you could please, thank you very much, if you could ask them to come back in, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, deputy mayor.
Thank you, acting CEO.
Thank you both for acting.
Anyway, tested my glasses, that, that little tiny picture on the screen, but anyway.
Well, that was quick, deputy mayor, you can feel free to continue if you want and let me get the meeting through quicker if you want.
We are very efficient, let me tell you, Mr Mayor. Now it's up to you to keep that going.
Great, let's go. Plan 03, development assessment and assessment policy, page 97. Tab four with the recommendation on page 97.
I have a recommendation, Mr Mayor.
Yes councillor Rhodes?
The motion that I would like to put up is that council adopts the Government Best Practices Guide 2007 and formats it into a policy and bring it back to council for approval before putting it out on council exhibition.
Wonderful, do you have a secondary for that? Second to councillor Moon? Any discussion? Right, I'm happy to, I'm happy to speak for it. I think anyone who hasn't read that, it's a really good, yeah, the New South Wales Government Best Practices Guide.
Uh, it's 2017 on the document.
This lovely document here, Development Assessment Guide, Practice Guide to assist councils to improve delivery timeframes, March 2017.
So just to clarify, and I think this might be the source of councillor Hagerty's confusion as well, is the motion, is the intention of the motion that the Best Practices Guide used to be further, used to further inform the development assessment policy or?
Yeah, this become the foundation of it, so to speak.
So basically that then scraps the development assessment policy?
This kind of becomes a development assessment policy.
Rather than, rather than what was.
Rather than the content of what's in there? It's more taking what's in here and adopting this and making that council's development policy.
Yeah, look, yeah, that was what I wanted to confirm. I think it was important to make that differentiation.
Yeah, great. And can I say, we'll leave it at the discretion of the CEO if they want to organise a, organise a workshop on it as part of the process to take everyone along the way. But I think it's a very, it makes very, very good reading.
Can you give it to them so they use the exact wording in the year?
Great, wonderful. Any discussion, further discussion?
Mr Mayor, I will just say in support of the motion that it, it does have timeframes in that document and I think that is one of the most essential criteria that we're trying to establish here in Liverpool. And it is a very, very easily read document and it contains even diagrams to better explain situations to people. All in all, Mr, Mr Mayor, I just believe that it is a better document and it does a better job. I thank the council for their, for their report that they gave and suggested development assessment policy, but I feel that this does a better job.
Wonderful, thank you. Any further, um, discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declared carried. Next item we have is Plan 04, the Draft Regional Affordable Housing Contribution Scheme, page one hundred and nine, tab five, with the recommendation on page, um, one hundred and ten. Um, I'm happy to move. How can we?
I have a number of questions, Mr. Mayor. At first, I looked at this and I thought that it was a, it was great to see collaboration, and I want to encourage collaboration between our South West Sydney councils, and in this case, some of the Western Sydney ones. But I have over a page, almost two pages of questions that I, I would like to have answered. I can put those questions on notice, and perhaps we defer that until these questions actually come back to council.
If you want to, I'm happy if you want to move a deferral, happy, subject to the question being answered. Can, can I add a point to it while we're at this? So petrol is very expensive, can we put a tax on petrol to create affordable petrol for everyone else? Because we're saying here, if you want to make houses cheaper, then you have to make them more expensive by putting a tax on them. So if we do the same for petrol, everyone will have cheaper petrol. Can we look at that?
There is, there's a petrol excise.
Petrol excise. But does that then fund, does that fund cheaper petrol for anyone?
For, for people in the agricultural sector, yes.
Oh, great, so it works.
Yeah.
So if we want cheaper petrol for everyone else.
Tax and transfer, it's the way to go.
That, that is the basis of our taxation system, Mayor.
To tax things to make them cheaper, make them more expensive, all right. So I got to tell my kids they've got to save up another ten, fifteen grand when they want to build their house, because that's going to make it cheaper.
Would you like, would you like to add that to the, the, the series of questions, Mr. Mayor?
And I'd like to add on to it, please. What is the quantifiable definition of affordable housing, right? What dollar figure is affordable? It's going to be, yes, deferred, I'm hap.
Yes, that this item be deferred until.
Right.
Can I ask a question? In terms of the actual kind of impact of deferring this policy on, you know, having affordable housing come online in the Liverpool area, what is the impact?
Say that, what?
I'll ask the acting director for planning.
Thank you for the question, I'll direct the inquiry to council's strategic coordinator, Luke Ossie.
Thank you, councillor, sorry, can, do you mind asking the question again?
Sure. We're currently in a cost of living crisis, where many people in our community can barely afford rent, especially in the most vulnerable sections of our community, where, um, you know, rental, rental prices are up and squeezing people, not in, not out of the market, into homelessness, which is where social and affordable housing is most necessary. If we defer this policy, how will that affect the amount of, of affordable housing that can come online in Liverpool in the next six months?
Yeah, thanks, councillor. I suppose it's important to differentiate affordable housing with social housing, so the report before you doesn't speak to social housing that's, that's supplied and provided by the state government primarily. This is affordable housing. This is simply a draft scheme, we're, we're looking for endorsement, just to put it on public exhibition, not to actually endorse the scheme itself at this stage. The Planning Partnership, which have come up with this scheme in collaboration with all of us South Western Sydney councils, is aiming to put on exhibition in March. So if a deferral does occur, there is a chance that we can work through all the questions raised, report that back to council in time to not delay that exhibition, and be part of that exhibition with the other councils involved with this project.
So can I ask a follow-up question in terms of what the, what the kind of timeframes you're working towards are at the moment?
Yeah, through the, through the CEO, like I said, we're looking to exhibit in March, and by we, actually, I mean the Western Sydney Planning Partnership, which we're a member of, obviously. So like I said, if, if we receive a, a list of questions and a deferral today, we can work through those over the summer break, report something back to council in February, and it's very likely that we can then still be part of that exhibition process if council supports that at a council meeting in February. The second council meeting, I should specify, in February.
Yes, it, it should also be. So not only, number one, that this item be deferred, you should note that councillor Rhodes will send us questions on notice to be looked at. And then there was the third matter that the mayor raised.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I, I have a question as well, I want to pick up on something that councillor Caliander asked. So through my thorough reading of this information, the fact that we're asking about how much affordable housing will be bought online to Liverpool, this will not address that, this is, this for me is about the collabor, the, the collaboration between Liverpool and Fairfield. And so in my reading and understanding of that in this programme, there is no guarantee any affordable housing will be delivered in Liverpool. What it's talking to is raising funds in developing areas and sharing it across the South West, and we are a major growth council. So from what I can see, our potential to raise funds is quite significant. However, how much of that lands for our community in Liverpool is very questionable under this, and I think that we need more information. And if it's okay, I would also like to forward some questions to be answered before we, we consider this further.
So, sorry Deputy Mayor, are you saying that the residents of Liverpool will be paying a tax on their housing, and that money will then go outside of Liverpool to other people?
That is absolutely, my understanding of this is that the partnership will be between us and Fairfield. And as far as I can see it, we talk all the time about being a growth council, and we know how much investment we have in Liverpool coming at the moment. And so that money raised in Liverpool is by no means guaranteed to serve the people of Liverpool. And I mean, if we can pick a council that could raise us lots of money, maybe that would be a better way that we could go. But look, I, I just think there are too many questions that are unanswered, and this doesn't look after the people of Liverpool.
That is one of the questions on this document.
Councillor Haddad?
Thank you, councillor Rhodes.
Well, well, Mr. Mayor, you asked the question, as you want to know what is the definition of affordable houses. Well, the answer is as simple as that, more profit in the pocket of the developers, unless the state government release some of its land and offer it cheaper to the community, that's what I believe.
Sorry, Mayor, if I can.
Yes, councillor Caliander?
So in just reading through the report again, it does actually specify on page one twelve that the draft scheme only applies to large non-residential developments over a thousand square metres GFA, which ensures the draft scheme does not apply to smaller, medium, local businesses, or specifically some other types of developments that will be included as at least on the report there. So as much as I appreciate the Deputy Mayor's comments, I think there's also, there's obviously sort of what this policy directly does, and then there's also the signal that approving or supporting a policy like this sends to the broader market, especially given Liverpool has a lot of interest at the moment.
So a thousand square metres of GFA, so if somebody moved into it, so if someone bought a unit, which is an entry point into the marketplace, and a thousand, a thousand metres of GFA, that's probably like twelve or thirteen unit building, which is a pretty, not a big building. So that means everyone who's moved into that new building complex has to pay extra money on top of.
No, it's large, non-residential. On page one twelve, the fourth paragraph down, halfway through, the draft scheme only applies to large, non-residential development over one thousand square metres.
So if you're buying, so if you're buying, what page are you saying that's, councillor?
That's on one, one, two?
Huh? One, one oh two, one, what page?
One, two, one hundred and twelve.
Sounds a bit different than one, one, nine.
It specifically exempts the following types of development from making contributions, which are social and affordable housing, and other specialist accommodation, non-residential development with a gross floor area of less than a thousand square metres, community facilities, replacement dwellings, residential alterations and additions that do not result in more than two hundred square metres of additional floor space, change of use or replacement development that does not result in.
So, so are you saying that people in unit blocks won't have to pay this?
Non-residential.
Won't have to pay. Sorry, can you put your mic on, sorry councillor?
Unit, unit blocks are.
Hold on, one second, sorry.
Yes, so it specifically says the draft scheme only applies to large, non-residential developments over a thousand square metres gross floor area.
All right, so, so, do I, councillor Moon?
Unit blocks are classified as residential, so they are. You'll have to pay.
Can I, if it was to be asked through the chair of, of.
Well, yeah, happy to, but I, I, from what I can read, if I could, before I hand over to, to Mr. Ossie, it says specifically the following types of development will be excluded from making contributions. So excluded from making, non-residential development will be excluded. So does that mean, I read that as non-residential, as non, something that's not a house, which means therefore residential will be included? No, I think it's pretty straightforward, but happy to pass over through the CEO?
Can I, so can I also make the point that it doesn't, as far as my question goes, it doesn't matter what developments we're taxing. I want, you know, we are a gross LGA with a lot of space to grow, and I'm just mindful of that. What's collected by our LGA needs to benefit our people.
Sorry, so if we can just get the clarification here, so councillor Caliander is saying that if you're going to go in a unit building that's above a thousand GFA, you won't be paying the tax. Is that correct, or?
Through, yeah, through the CEO, so residential development will be taxed through this system with some exclusions as listed on page one hundred and twelve. Obviously, things like social housing and affordable housing won't be taxed, as well as some smaller residential developments potentially. I should stress, this is still being worked through, and this is draft to be, to have feedback on. For instance, secondary dwellings, there was a lot of discussion with the group as to whether they should or shouldn't be taxed. Feedback will be received through the exhibition process and further consultation. So a residential flat building would be taxed through this. The one thousand square metres has been stated correctly in terms of that's non-residential. So any non-residential below one thousand square metres will not be taxed. Above one thousand square metres will be taxed a very small amount, point three percent of that floor space will be taxed.
And then, just to add to the confusion, this is why there's all these questions. On page one hundred and twelve, the third paragraph, the draft script, uh, scheme proposes a low rate affordable housing contribution calculated generally at one point five of the total floor space or developable areas, developable areas for residential subdivision and residential developments to be imposed as a condition of development consent. There is just a lot of conflicting information in this document, Mr. Mayor, which is why.
I think it's pretty black and white, it says that if you're building a house, you're going to get taxed. It's about councils being able to.
And then another point, they're saying, no, they don't, so.
No, it says, it says a black and white, it was, it says ultimately, you're going to get taxed if you're building a house, unless it's social housing, affordable housing, seniors housing, boarding houses, group homes, hostels, if you're doing an extension, if you're doing a knockdown and rebuild, which basically means if you live in Austral, and you're trying to have a go and create a home for your family, you're going to get a tax, right, on your house, right? If you're moving into a unit in Liverpool that has more than twelve, thirteen units roughly, then you're going to, it's going to get, you're going to pay tax on that. That's what it's saying, it's pretty black and white. And if, how does putting a tax make things cheaper, is I don't, and I didn't go to that, I left school at year ten, so I don't have that education to help me understand that mathematics and that equation, but I just can't see how making things more expensive makes it cheaper.
Could I just suggest?
Yes, councillor Green?
That this is the kind of, of issue that I would expect to come to either councillor briefing or to the governance committee, so, or, or a particular workshop, where, you know, where, you know, that everybody then, you know, works through the questions together, we have a debate about it, and then, you know, we leave with a very solid understanding of what's going on. I think it's, it's, there are innate complexities here, and probably there's some nuances that need to be explained. So I would appreciate the deferment and a, like, a standalone, I think, I would hope councillor Rhodes might agree with me, a standalone workshop on this issue.
Yep, thank you. Deputy Mayor, or did you, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I did want clarity, but I think you answered it for me. My understanding is exactly what you were saying, so everybody building a new house in Austral, if we're, if we've had adopted this policy, would then pay a tax on top of that new dwelling. And on the last point made by councillor Green, if we could have the answers to the questions before the workshop, then we'll come in much more informed and get the most out of that workshop, so that would be great.
So I have actually written a motion, Mr. Mayor, which says all of that. So the motion would read that council, one, notes this report in the draft Western Sydney Regional Affordable Housing Contribution Scheme, prepared through the Western Sydney Planning Partnership. Then, two, defer the draft Western Regional Affordable Housing Contribution Scheme to a workshop so councillors can consider the scheme in detail.
Already written, weeks ago.
Councillor, can we add to that, that you councillor will send through your questions on notice? And that they will be responded to prior to the workshop.
And my question of, can you please provide a quantifiable?
Number four, and then number four was what the mayor had indicated was his question.
Not the affordable petrol scheme, but the affordable, forget that one, we can do that, we can deal with that as a separate, at a separate time. But the one regarding what is the quantifiable amount, a dollar figure, of what, what constitutes affordable housing?
Yeah, it's good, that there, yeah, there are four.
Yep. Cool. All right, and if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declared carried. Wonderful. Now. Plan 05, page one hundred and nineteen, with the recommendation on page one hundred and twenty. Can I move that we defer this matter till the end of February council meeting? Point one, point two, that council do knocks homes affected, informing them of the proposed need to change the name for Essential Services.
Council Officers or Councilors?
Council Officers.
Council Officers, when you say council, it's you. Council Officers.
Then put that in. Is there a second for that?
Me.
Second, councillor Moon? Did you second, sorry, second councillor Hagerty?
Yes.
Sorry, second councillor Hagerty? This is the last meeting, you know, we got to be, we have to be very nice to them, not just normal, we're normally nice, but we're going to be very nice today.
All right, next.
Where's councillor Hall gone?
In favour?
All right, I'll put the, if there's, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, declared carried.
If one of the council officers could just let councillor Hall in case he walked out because of the item that it's finished.
When did he? No.
Just in case. Just in case. I meant for Harris to jump up and Jeff, I mean, not the security.
Is he okay?
His first line of work getting up.
All right, just to make sure he's okay. Next item is COM 01, page one sixty, tab seven, the recommendation on page one sixty.
Happy to move as per the recommendation.
Second, councillor Green? Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declared carried. Sorry, it's a little bit slower using paper than I had.
I like it.
Page one seventy-three?
One seventy-three.
Yep, page one seventy-three, COM zero, uh, two, page one seventy, tab eight, with the recommendation on page one seventy-four. Happy to move, point one, just with the last alteration, rather than the eleventh of December, make it on the tenth of December. Council meeting.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Happy to second.
You're changing eleven to ten?
Yep.
Yep.
Moving to ten.
Now, okay.
Now.
Sorry, she's got it wrong, we shall make sure she fixes it.
Ten, yep, great. Um, the, um, happy to adopt point two with regards to the governance committee, but I'll flag that, um, I'd like to have a conversation with councillors, uh, very early on about how we can improve the structure of that committee.
Didn't we say we were going to have a meeting?
Councillor, sorry, can you put on your microphone, sorry?
Didn't we say we were going to have a meeting end of September after the elections?
Oh, can you speak up, oh, he's just asking whether we're going to have a meeting.
That's what was discussed last meeting.
Yeah, so if we look at it, I think it's been tightened up, so the election's on September fourteenth, you imagine the polls will be declared probably two weeks, I would say, after that. So which means then there's another two week period, if you wanna, if we can bring it forward or?
But, but the council will be at the hand of caretakers, you can't have a meeting.
Yeah, I think we can leave it to the new council to bring forward a meeting if they want to, if, if need be, if that's happened. On top of that, yeah, but I was gonna say that I would like to have a discussion with councillors about changing the format of the governance committee to make it a bit more responsive. Right, but I think we can adopt these dates and then let's see how that changes, if we can do that in the first February meeting. All right, great. Any other discussion? Nope, great, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Corp zero one, investment report, page one seventy-eight, tab nine, recommendation on page one seventy-nine, move councillor Hadid, seconded councillor Hagerty, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, uh, declare it carried. Next item is CFD zero one, review the city development policy, page one eighty-nine.
Just a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yes councillor.
Uh, in the report, the only thing that I can see is that we've taken out, um, we used to have in their CBD activation events, and it seems to have been replaced with major events. Can somebody explain what that involves? What is a major event and what are CBD activation events and why was it changed?
Yeah, and if I could just say that, I can only see one track change in the document on page one ninety-two, which has two thousand twenty-three, but I can't see any other track changes. Which makes it a bit, if I can ask council staff to be mindful of that, because it makes life easier to read when you can see the track changes.
I, I, I'd also like to say that normally when we get a policy and we're making changes to it, we get the policy with the bits scratched out or redobbing it. Yep, okay.
As for your question councillor, I'll refer it to the director of city futures.
Thank you CEO, thank you councillor, look, uh, my understanding is that, uh, the addition is major events, which is the, uh, events in the mall that we're doing, uh, the world variety events that, uh, we've been doing. Um, and that's the addition to the policy, it's the only change to the policy. I wasn't aware that it was an alteration to the one before, and I note the, um, the comments around strikeout, future reference for the policy. It'll go on exhibition, so if it's not, um, uh, if there's no, um, contrary feedback in the exhibition, it'll be automatically adopted under our policy.
Can I ask a question please? Uh, usually, uh, to the chair, usually with the major events, um, there's, that's been a result of, uh, securing funding, um, particular funding for that. Uh, I mean, to be honest, I'd rather see some real steps toward beautification in the CBD rather than the active, the major events stuff that, that could be funded elsewhere. I mean, there are certain, particular areas of our city where people will say, look, it always looks shabby. And I think that, yeah, I'd rather see some, you know, meaningful beautification works being, um, planned.
Thank you, I'll ask the director Tina Bono.
So just before you do, can I also add to that, um, one of the, the lists of, uh, one of the, the projects that should be included in my opinion and isn't, is around safety. Um, so similar to streetscape, um, you know, one of the, the most common pieces of feedback we receive about the CBD and the issues with the CBD is lack of perceived safety. So why would we not include that in what, um, you know, what type of projects should be included?
Yeah, so if we don't have a, so I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy to move the policy with an extra point that we include, uh, um, streetlights and CCTV cameras as part of this, happy to.
I, I think it should be broader perceived, more broadly perceived safety. Um, you know, streetlights and, and cameras are sort of an element of that, but I think perceived safety and improving perceived safety is a lot broader than just those two things.
Yeah, so can you quantify that, because it's a little bit, this is quite specific, so would you, because it's a broad statement you've made, so.
It would be to include in point four, point one of the policy.
Yep.
Uh, examples of appropriate project may include but are not limited, limited to, and then it has a whole list of various things that, um, the, that this fund may, may be used for. And as a, a subpoint of that, including, uh, improving safety or perceived safety.
All right, the, yeah, sorry, the, just the thing is, it's, it's giving examples and like why they're actually specific examples of things. And I guess the point of the policy, and we need to be very mindful of our legal obligations here with this policy and the, because we're collecting this as a special levy. And I think that's why this is about providing framework. So I think when, if you're gonna say safety, it just needs to be a bit more specific than that.
Could I suggest, um, like annual safety audit?
We do that anyway, don't we? Yeah, that's already done. So, that's already done. So if you can think of some other options, councillor Harrow?
Yes, I've actually got a couple of questions on this as well. Um, the, uh, the CDF fund was originally set up for, can you hear me?
If you can just speak up, if you can just speak up, because air conditioning is just.
Yeah, it's echoing as well, and you're sitting above it. Right, um, the CDF fund, as far as I know, was originally set up so that it's, it funds the developments within the ci, the city area. One of the issues a few years ago was that when we did the changes to the mall, the funding for those changes was taken from that CDF fund. Now, considering that the mall, the works cost us round about eighteen million dollars, if I remember correctly.
Eleven, eleven million dollars, eleven million dollars.
Okay, whatever.
It was, and then ten million dollars for the big park, so it was around twenty, twenty, twenty-one million dollars combined, the total two projects.
All up. The pro, the, the point is, that CDF fund at the time was netting round about four million dollars a year, which meant that the, the works, the mall itself costing, as you say, twenty million odd dollars, that was going to take several terms of council to be paid off. So at the moment, are we still paying that off? Is there any money in there?
Yes, I'll ask the acting director of finance.
Through the CEO, um, yes, you are right councillor, a, a big chunk of that money that we are collecting is going towards paying the loan. Um, as far as what is balanced, I think we had about, uh, three hundred thousand dollars left as of thirtieth of June twenty twenty-three.
Oh, so it's pretty much paid off now?
Yes.
No, 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 the balance of the fund, we are still paying.
What's in there? Okay, yeah, yeah, so I guess the question is when, how long is, how long has the funds been? Been, what do they call it, um?
And also every quarter, when we do the budget, the budget review paper, we provide you an update of, uh, what's the balance and, you know, what the projection is. Thank you.
So at the moment, there, there is little amount of money left in there, simply because we've been paying off the mall for several terms of council. Other question I have is, uh, the CCTV cameras. I have noticed that there's the original CCTV cameras that we had around the railway station on posts and they were wireless operated. They've obviously been changed to something else, I don't know where they are, I haven't seen them. Could we get an update on the CCTV cameras, where they are or how many there are? And, uh, what's the cost of them, annual cost? Could we find that out please, at some future meeting?
I'll, I'll take that on notice councillor.
Thank you, that, they're my concerns, and it actually came up in our, um, uh, safety committee meeting a few weeks ago, a week ago. And the same question was asked, where are they? And we were told that, uh, you can't, we can't tell them because of privacy issues.
It was confidential.
It was confidential, exactly.
We have no idea.
So I, I would suggest that, I would like to see that information in particular, and, and when were they changed? And why weren't we notified?
And not only the cost of the cameras, but also the, um, the main, uh, the operation side of it, how much is that costing council as well?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so that I can understand councillors, so this report, uh, that is going before you, the recommendation is to note the report and endorse, uh, so that it can go to a twenty-eight day public exhibition, obviously we come back to you. Are you asking for additional dot points to go in at four point one? Or are you happy to leave it as is? And then after the public exhibition, when we come back to you, maybe ten other things may have come out through the public exhibition, more than you're actually raising for you to consider.
Happy for what? Well, from what I can understand what CEO just said, that the dra, draft policy will go out on public exhibition and, uh, the public submissions can be also added into that. And then, you know, there could be, um, other things we haven't thought of or other things that people are concerned about, and that can be incorporated into the final document that's then comes back to council.
Is everyone happy with that or?
Yeah, the recommendation as per the book, and we will hold council to account that they will get back to us with, um.
All right, great.
When it goes to public consultation, we have to come back to you, you don't think specifically stated.
There was additional questions.
Move by myself, second at councillor Rhodes, I'll put the motion forward, all those in favour? Against, declare the motion carried.
What I was alerting.
Move the.
The additional stuff we asked for about this. It's not in the motion.
Move, move the committees, we move as a whole. Um, traffic committee and tourism committee, seconded councillor Harrow, move councillor Hadid, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Question with notice, councillor Goodman?
Yeah, thank you for that, all good.
All good, great. Okay, notice the motion.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The questions we've noticed that councillor Goodman could put up, could we have a?
Sorry, can you speak up as loud, if you guys can speak up loud, if you don't mind, sorry.
I'll bite it.
Bit of, bit of projection, bit of projection on your voice, if you don't mind councillors.
Uh, could we have a discussion on that in confidential session, uh, in regards to the question that he asked? I have some issues with the books that are in the library, and I'd like to have a discussion in confidential about what council thinks of that. Could we do that?
Yep, just, um, deal with it at the end and we'll move it on this confidential, on the appropriate section of the act.
Thank you.
When the time, uh, gets for it. All right, uh, councillor Green, uh, so nom zero one, nom zero one, uh, page two fourteen, that is yours, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Nom fourteen, with the recommendation on two fourteen, repair and upgrade of Memorial of the Big Park. You're moving your motion?
I would like to move the motion.
Great.
As, as it is in the book place.
Yeah, do you have a seconder?
I've got questions.
Yeah, second councillor Caliander? Yeah, sorry, just one second, do you want to speak for your motion or do you wanna?
Uh, I just think it, um, it would be a very good idea to be working with the, uh, sub-branch of the RSL um, in terms of upgrades, uh, whether it be in lighting or whatever it is, or what are the suggestions that the RSL could have. And the fact that there is, uh, uh, grant money available to do that, um, to be able to tap into that, um, I think, you know, takes some pressure off council's, um, budget.
Great. Now, is councillor Rhodes?
Yes, just the, the question, I believe this was raised in the governance committee, am I correct in remembering that? Where we were talking about, well, it's the brass that's being stolen. And, uh, council suggested that they might, um, utilise a, a fake brass, uh, so that there's no monetary, monetary value, uh, in taking the actual plaques. I, I, I seem to remember that discussion and that being mentioned, um. So that hasn't been, uh, was that resolved at the governance committee meeting and have we to, to, to look at that?
Yes, I'll ask the director Shane Mallard, he's got some information on that.
Thank you, Mr. CEO, and thank you councillor, um, first of all, when we were made aware of that, uh, theft, as you rightly say, it's not vandalism, there was some paint sprayed there, but that may have been a separate incident. Uh, the vandalism of the plaques, and also some of the plaques around the walk in the, in the, uh, in the park itself, um, by our heritage, um, officer, uh, then we commenced the process of quickly replacing them for the ANZAC Day, sorry, the, um, Remembrance Day service, which is only three days away. I want to commend, uh, the operations team who, uh, made up mock plaques and that, and, and looked quite effective, uh, for that day, and, uh, Mr. Wheeler, the heritage officer, is sourcing and along with the city design team, looking at different types of plaques. This day and age, they can have long plugs on them, long plugs, that can be drilled in and attached, and I, I imagine Mr., the operations team know about that, and the ones that were there were just put on with liquid nails pretty much, and would, would leave it off, um, for the recycling value unfortunately. We also reported to the police, uh, and, uh, there are strong laws around taking scrap metal, which is not, um, not sourced properly. So, well, we haven't heard anything from that. So the, the team is looking at the two options, and I know Mr. Burton would be, um, involved with that when the repairs are, are commissioned. So I'll take on notice the issue around a, a non-brass plaque, I'll, I'll, I'll raise that with the heritage officer.
So number two directs the necessary funding and resources to repair and replace the memorials as soon as practical?
Yep.
That's already been done, has it?
Yes, well, I, I understand the estimate is, um, in, in the tens of thousands, uh, that's, that's been allocated for that.
What hasn't been done in this, this reading through the motion? Have we approached the city of Liverpool RSL sub-branch?
Well, they approached us about the vandalism, the theft, so.
Everything's been done.
So I think there's an engagement there, and I'll double check on that too.
Should we congratulate council on a job well done because?
Can I just say, uh, excuse me, with respect, uh, number three is working with the city of Liverpool RSL branch in terms of the, in seeking the funding and the, and then proceeding with the upgrade, which they should be, uh, I would have thought be involved in that process. So all those other things can be put in there, and as I explained prior to the discussion, is that the, being able to access government funding to be able to do that is all, is, uh, surely of assistance to council.
So who has to apply, the sub-branch?
No, the, the council will.
Does, does the council?
Yeah.
The council would assist the sub-branch to apply for the funding, is that?
I'll bring it to the attention of the officer, uh, I would suggest he's one with great knowledge of applying for grants. So I'll, um, bring it to its attention.
So do you mind speaking into your microphone in a loud voice please, Mr. Director Mallard?
Do you want to repeat that? I just say I'll raise, if the motion is, is resolved, I'll raise the issue of the sub-branch application with the sub-branch, which we had an engagement with already. And, uh, Mr. Wheeler, the heritage officer, I can assure you the council is well-versed in applying for grants, uh, so I will, um, remind him of that.
Great, wonderful. All right, we'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare it unanimous. Next item is nom zero two, page two sixteen, traffic mitigation, you are a public school councillor Rhodes, you're moving that way?
Yes, I'm quite happy to take this to the traffic committee meeting, I thank council for their.
We need a seconder, second at councillor Hadid, great, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. Next item is councillor Caliander. So her, nom zero three, Harris Creek Beach, page, bridge, page two nineteen, recommendation on page, uh, two nineteen, tab sixteen. Move councillor Caliander?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and from the outset, I want to thank, um, Robert McGarity for providing, I think, all of us with much greater detail and insight into Alison's contribution to our community and, and her hard work over many years. Um, it's not something that I could have, um, it's not insight that I could have provided into this space, and I think it sort of adds a, a dimension of understanding and knowledge to the reasons behind bringing this notice of motion to council. to the reasons behind bringing this notice of motion to council. Um, I appreciate the CEO's comments, however, I would like to move the notice of motion as I have submitted.
Yep. Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, I just have some questions once the motion's been seconded.
Yeah, seconded for the motion, councillor Green.
Thank you. I just was after some clarity. First of all, I would really like to thank Mr. McGarity as well for his contribution to the meeting today, and to echo my support for recognition of the member. She was an amazing asset to our community, and I think that this is a very deserved thing that she is remembered by the community. I just would like some clarification, possibly from staff. So, the Harris Creek Bridge is a locally significant bridge that forms part of the area. Is that original bridge with the local heritage remaining? And what we are discussing is a new bridge that is crossing Harris Creek. Is that correct?
Yeah, getting, we're getting nods everywhere, especially from Mr. McGarity here. And I think, I think, I think the point you're trying to make is that it's about naming a new bridge versus trying to rename an existing bridge. Yeah.
Correct, correct. And I think, I thank staff for the answer to the question and the comments, but for clarity, this is a new bridge, and we keep that local heritage bridge as is, and we're naming a new bridge. And if that's what it is, I'm all good. Thank you.
So can we just insert the word name the new Harris Creek Bridge in honour? Is that?
Or perhaps the new bridge over Harris Creek, rather than referring to it as the Harris Creek Bridge?
Yes, yes. Yep, all right. If I can put it like that, if the mover and the second have that, name the new bridge over Harris Creek Bridge.
So, Mr. Mayor, for clarity, my CEO comments were based on the existing bridge. They weren't because I didn't read into it a brand-new bridge to be built. So, if we can also add the new bridge to be built over Harris, we now know we're talking about a new bridge to be built, then you can remove all of my CEO comments.
And is that also where, now are we going to the road bridge or the actual? Because the pedestrian, correct me if I'm wrong, the pedestrian bridge is the Harris Creek Bridge. So the road will be the new bridge?
That's my understanding after these questions, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Please add up.
Put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can we record that it was unanimous?
Unanimous, yes, thank you. Please record it's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. I'll now call for a recess, and I can adjourn the meeting until 4:05 PM. Thank you, everyone. Resumed. The next item is conf 01, minutes Liverpool Heritage Advisor Committee, page 1028.
Happy to move that way.
Moved councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor Green. Any discussion? Put the motion. All those in favour? Against, declare it carried. Next item is conf 02, page 1034.
Happy to.
Moved councillor Green, seconded councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, declare it carried. Next item is conf 03, page 1041, recommendation on page 1042.
Happy to move that way.
Moved councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor Amun. Any discussion? Put the motion. All those in favour? Against, declare it carried. Next item is conf 04, page 1051, recommendation page 152. Moved councillor Harrow, seconded councillor Hadid. Any discussion? Put the motion. All those in favour? Against, I declare it carried. Next item is conf 05, page 1106.
I have questions.
Yep.
Um, in regards to this, um, I am lacking in information as to with whom council is supposed to have an agreement for the payments of in lieu of rates. Who is it that council is actually, has that agreement with concerning the Moorbank Intermodal? Is it the Commonwealth Government? It is. Not this. I'm not talking about this. I'm talking about the land that we own, on which they've built an intermodal, on which we're being paid money in lieu of rates. Is that being paid by the Commonwealth Government?
I'll ask the acting director of finance, who's aware of the answer to that.
Through the CEO, the intermodal, the Moorbank Intermodal Company is owned by the Commonwealth Government, and you can say that, yes, yeah, as a subsidiary of Commonwealth Government, the Commonwealth Government actually files the rights in equivalent.
So the Commonwealth Government is asking us to go into an agreement with them, and yet we don't have an official agreement in writing concerning those rates and payments of the, we don't have anything in writing for the Moorbank Intermodal, for the payment in lieu of rates.
Through the CEO, yes, we have been attempting to get a agreement in place, at least a memorandum of understanding, but have been unsuccessful so far.
So would it not be appropriate for council to add additional points to the recommended motion? Six, council provide an in-depth report, including all correspondence related to the agreement for the funds paid in lieu of rates for this land used for the intermodal site. Point seven, council provide an estimation of maintenance costs to Moorbank Avenue, Anzac Avenue, Newbridge Road, Governor Macquarie Drive, once the intermodal is in full operation. And council make a submission for the roads to transfer to the state government's control. We've got to do more than what we are, and I would add another point in there, that council makes a request for the Commonwealth Government to formalize the agreement for payment in lieu of rates in a written format. Is this not the opportunity for us to do that? They're asking something from us, but they refuse to give what we need.
Yeah, look, councillor, I've got through you, Miss Fair. Councillor, I've got no problem with going back and talking to them. I can assure you that we're continually talking to them. I mean, at the end of the day, we have no power, we have no entitlement to demand the payment of rates of any Commonwealth-owned asset due to a number of sections, but in particular, I think it's section 109 of the Commonwealth Act. I mean, they prevail over the state, they prevail over local government. But, you know, we can, we talk to them, we're working with them, we're seeing what we can do. If you want to add those in on the basis, you know, we try, I've got no problem with it.
Well, then I have no problem moving the motion with four additional points.
Great. Do you have a second there? Do you have a second there? Going once. Do you want a second there? Seconded, deputy mayor.
Yeah, I'll second that.
You thought you had a part in gift, didn't you? So the motion is as per the book with the additional points that council provide an in-depth report, including all correspondence relating to the agreement of funds paid in lieu of rates for the land used as the intermodal site.
Councillor, I might ask if you could maybe, if someone can pick up the wording and just add it to them, so they get it exactly right.
I imagine that it'd be a significant undertaking. Would that be a significant undertaking? Point six could require a budget allocation to undertake such significant amount of work.
Is it not just a collation of information we've already got? I'm not asking for anything new there.
If I could maybe suggest councillor Rhodes that we remove the word in-depth, that's probably the difficult part in understanding what can then means. We provide you with what we've got.
Yeah, okay.
Moorbank, what's before says Moorbank Avenue? The relevant roads?
Can we, we need to make number five the very last one. So what's six, seven, eight, nine, make those five, six, seven, eight, and make the very last confidential, keeping it confidential, the very last one.
Right.
No, 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 we're talking on the keeping confidential, the report has to be last, so everything's.
Can we just see the whole?
Including your additional ones.
Can we just see the whole motion on the screen, please?
So this one. See what was five? Yeah, five becomes nine, and all of yours come before that. Otherwise, we'd say keep confidential, but not yours.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone. If there's no further discussion, I will put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Next item is conf 06, youth council minutes, page 1112. Moved councillor Green, seconded councillor Harrow. Any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Next item is conf 07, Hammondville Precinct, and I would like to move a motion, page 1123. Point one, as is. Point two, remove the word execute from point two. Point three, as is, but that probably goes at the bottom of the motion. Point four. Bear with me for a moment, and I'll work with the typist, and I'll make it a little bit easier, and I'll come back in a second. So, point four was so conduct community consultation. After Australia Day for three weeks, with the results presented back to council in the February, second meeting in February. Point five include in this report the history of this matter. Six, create an internally restricted reserve named, titled the Hammondville Pool and Precinct reserve for the funds to go into. That was it. Pretty much, and seconded.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by the deputy mayor. Right, I'm happy to speak to it. Happy to speak to it, councillors. This has been going on for a long, long time, and we've gone to the community on the master plan. We're out there at the moment for the the plan of management. Happy to do some more consultation. Ultimately, you know, and the community, yeah, have their say in it. But I think, I think there's been overwhelming support for the community wanting upgraded community facilities. You know, the community wants new swimming pools, they want upgraded sporting fields, they want the best stuff, you know? And I think spending money on things like that is better than spending on council buildings and all that. So I think it's, I strongly recommend this motion to councillors. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to also put my support.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to also put my support behind this motion. We have been talking about this, not just for this council term, but for multiple council terms beforehand. The community has been brought on the journey for so long, they've probably forgotten the beginning of it. And I will be happy to see this come to fruition for our community who deserve the best facilities. Um, a one-stop shop, a hub for them to congregate, and I'm really looking forward to seeing this come to fruition. Thank you.
Great. Any further discussion?
Yep, I have some concerns.
Yes, councillor Green, are you speaking for or against the motion?
I'm, well, I'm against.
Against? Yep, go for it.
As I was be before in the last vote. Um, you know, it's okay to say that the, um, outcome of the October 2023 meeting was received publicly. But how publicly in what? The minutes? And how many people in our community read that? I'm concerned that people are going to see, uh, that the lands, public land, which is public assets, have already been sold prior to any community consultation, um, being undertaken. On another note, I, I understand that there's a history, I understand that, that the community's been waiting a long time. But, I mean, I refer back to the leisure pools, um, uh, master plan. That was, I think it's 2017, 18, where it doesn't even refer to Hammondville Pool. It talks about Carnes Hill, it talks about refurbishment of, uh, Whitlam Centre. It talks about refurbishment of Michael Wenden and a new pool at Austral. Um, I could also argue that the people of Miller have waited an extended period of time for, uh, the Miller's, uh, social master plan to be implemented. It's unfunded and it's, you know, it's sitting there. And it wasn't even on the 16, uh, projects that were nominated as council priority. So in good conscience, I, I can't support this. Because I don't believe that it's might, that the people of Hammondville might have been consulted. But I don't believe that the, the people wider than that will really understand that this involved the selling of land. And I am also, I'm, I'm getting calls and questions about Morebank Library and Community Centre now. What's happening to them? Is council going to sell them? I mean, and it's all in confidential and I can't say anything. So, um, I just want, I, I will be voting against this.
Yep, sorry councillor, just, just to clarify, the consultation that was conducted, I'm happy if I can refer to the, uh, relevant director, to the CEO. But the consultation did talk about doing community hubs and if you want to have all the facilities together. And ultimately decision what happens with any of those facilities. Ultimately, you, if you want to keep old facilities and you need to come up with a maintenance plan with them. And I think that's up to you as a councillor to come up with that. But I'll just refer back to the director about that consultation that happened and if you can give us some data about that.
Uh, thank you. Through the CEO, through the consultation process, the community have been brought on the journey around a precinct, a one-stop-shop. Um, for all the various elements, which they, uh, that has been well received, um, by the community. Uh, I can get you the more broader detail on that, um, in terms of the outcomes. But largely, they have been, as part of the master planning and planner management and that consultation journey, which we've gone out twice. Um, pre-bringing the draft and now after the, as the draft has been endorsed, there has been wide support for the precinct.
You should mention a new facility.
Yes, so this is inclusive of a new aquatic facility, a, a potential library in the stage two and the childcare, um, as part of that provision.
Yep. Any other speakers for or against?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I think I will speak for this motion. The way that I see it is that, uh, the people who actually use that sport facility is very much in favor of having greater facilities provided to them. The, it's, council hasn't got this money. It would go on to a long list that councillor Green has spoken about as to what happens with other projects when council hasn't got the money to fund them themselves. I believe that it makes good sense to partner with people to provide the facilities that the people want and need. This facility as a sports hub would create a facility of regional and possibly even international standards. It's going to increase the opportunity for our children in Liverpool to participate at higher levels of sport. When you say it hasn't been, uh, consulted, the community hasn't been consulted. I believe that this is the longest standing development that I've been, well, almost, that I've been engaged in. And, uh, I know that the community is aware of it. The assets that are being sold are being sold to be able to provide better and improved assets at the very site. Now, that's the reason why I agree that, uh, we should go ahead with this, uh, particular project. And I throw my sort of support behind the motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wonder if we could add somewhere into this motion. Um, you know, a facility of this magnitude servicing our community like this needs buy-in from, um, lots of different levels of government and I wonder if we could call on the state government to assist with funding of this entire project as well, somewhere in the motion, please.
Yeah, did you want to add that as a seven, as a point seven?
Yep, point seven, or if it needs to go before point six, I don't mind, wherever it can be, and I think we need to call for buy-in there, please.
Yep. Great. Yeah, I'm happy to, um, add, to have that included. Councillor Harrell, sorry, I can't see your light, my apologies.
Oh, this monitor's in the road. Yes, look, uh, I, I'd like to speak against it. Not on the basis that we don't need it, I believe we do need it. My problem is selling assets, assets that once you sell them, you can't get them back. Point in case is what we did at number one Hoxton Park Road. We sold it and then some years later, we bought it back for what we paid for. Basically, we, it was a waste of time.
It's long to see it.
That too. Uh, thank you councillor. I agree. So while I don't have a problem with doing what we're doing, but I would much prefer to lease the property if that can be done. If we were to lease it to them, that way, in nineteen year, ninety-nine years' time, that's the longest lease that you can have. In ninety-nine years' time, the council in that time can decide what they want to do with it. That's basically my point of view. I think it's great to have the facilities to be able to get them. But once you sell that land, it's going, you can't get it back, you won't be able to afford to buy it back. That's my only, only thing against it. Other than that, I think it's great opportunity for the facilities, for the community, that's great. Uh, but I do not believe that we should sell the land.
Councillor Kavender?
Thank you, Mayor. Look.
Are you speaking for or against?
Against. Um, I also have, uh, concerns around a proposal to sell council land. As councillor Harrell pointed out, there have been times where, um, you know, the, the decision was only realized. It was only realized that the decision to sell land was the wrong one, you know, down the track. I think what adds to the risk is given the price of land at the moment. If we were to decide in, you know, a few years' time that it was the wrong decision and that we wanted to buy it back like we did with, um, Hoxton Park Road. We would not be assured of, uh, the, the cost of that. Um, because we all know that the cost of land is rising exponentially. Um, and, you know, in terms of the, the community consultation on this, the community should know, this is their land. We are representatives of the community and we should be open and transparent in saying to people, well, hey, here is um, an upgrade, a potential upgrade of facilities, but in order.
Sorry councillor, I have to pull you up on a point of order there. In saying that we, we should be transparent, you're saying that council has not been transparent on this?
Well, considering we're currently in confidential session, I.
No, we're not in confidential, this is meaning.
Considering part of this motion says keeps confidential this report.
Yeah, that's typical practice in doing that, but you're saying, but, sorry, you're implying that councillors and council staff have not been transparent. So I pulled you up on a point of order on that, you'd have to choose to withdraw that statement. Um, I, I would ask that you would because it's implying that council is not acting appropriately and you're putting council into disrepute.
Well, given that the first time anyone on this council heard about this proposal was when you stood up in front of a press conference. I would say that there has been a certain amount.
Well, council, I, I go back to it, it's a point of order. This has been a negotiation for how many, has anybody here met with Morebank Sports Club? Right, in the previous year, in the previous term of council? Was anybody aware of this before in the previous term of council? Um, anyone? You were, anyone else? Or did no one else turn up?
Not, not in, not in this particular fashion. This wasn't the proposal that week.
So you've not have been, no one, you've not been aware of, there's been no discussions with Morebank Sports Club? For selling land, sorry, I'll do a, hold on a second, for selling land?
Given you cut into the speaking time.
Yes councillor, because, um, I'm the chair of this meeting, right? And there's, I've called a point of order because you're bringing council into disrepute. You are saying council is not being transparent with the way it deals with the community, all right?
And that is my opinion and perspective.
Okay, great. So, so you're bringing everybody into dispute and I remind you of the provisions associated with that. Um, this, and to correct you as a point of clarification, this has been going on for over ten years, right? So if you haven't read about this in your emails that you've been getting, if you haven't been aware of this in the briefings, you've been on council for seven years and three months. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
At no point in any of those ten years was the proposal for council to outlay multiple million dollars of, uh, of council funds into this particular proposal, right? So.
So there hasn't, sorry, can I just get some clarification on that? What, how long has this been, project been going on for? With regards to putting funds into building a facility?
Well, can I ask you, was there a resolution of council on the books to, uh, to fund this particular project before you stood up at that press conference?
Um, yeah, there's been, there's been, there has been, let's go, there's been a master plan, I'll refer to it.
Yeah, through the sale of land, when this came back, when this came to council in 2020, um, with the proposal of disposal. Uh, the resolution at the time was to then undergo the further work, which was the master plan, which is why council has invested so in, um, in, in that process and have got this far in terms of, of that provision. So we've worked to work through the master plan, the engagement with the community to get it right, and now we've come back with that, um, proposal.
And sorry, what year was that?
Uh, I believe, uh, it's 2020, but I would have to get.
So by the previous, so by, so by, so by the previous council.
I need to pull that up for a second.
Pardon?
I, I need to pull that up for a second. As councillor Hagerty pointed out, nobody's contesting that, that, that there was discussion around this type of project in some way, shape or form, for, um, for a long period of time. However, a master plan does not constitute a resolution of council saying that we, um, we put X number of funds towards this particular project.
So let's see this, so the staff work on a master plan. So master plans work like this. The staff ask for money in the budget.
Point of all.
Sorry, one second councillor.
I don't appreciate your condescending tone, actually.
No, there is no condescending tone. Councillor, you are accusing this, councillor, you are excusing this, you are excusing this council, this council. Right? If acting in a fashion that is not in line with the law government act.
You've taken issue with one word in what I've said. You've taken issue with one word.
If I ask you to please turn off your microphone, you have said that this council is not working in the appropriate fashion in line with the law government act, right?
I have not said that.
Sorry councillor, please, I, as per the code of meeting practice, when the chair rises, he's not, the, the chair is not to be interrupted by councillor, right?
I will call dissent in the chair.
I ask you to please respect the code of meeting practice as resolved by this council, right? You are saying councillor, I had to interrupt you because you brought this council, you are saying, you're bringing into disrepute by your comments.
And I just.
I have an obligation as a chair of this meeting to ensure that no, no derogatory comments are made against council.
Not allowed to make any comments, you keep bullying and, and talking over it.
Thank you councillor. No, all due respect, as per the code of meeting practice.
You can get up and talk over people and not let them have their say. I don't remember that bit of the code of meeting practice.
Sorry, when the chair, you don't, we'll have a look at it.
Feel free to it.
Yeah, where you, where you can get up and speak over people and not let them have their say.
No councillor, it's about keeping order.
Because you don't like what they're saying. No, you don't like what they're saying.
It's within the, it's within the code of meeting practice. If you disagree with it, feel free to amend it, but it's, it's a code of meeting practice.
It's not.
If somebody is bringing this organization into disrepute, it is my duty as the chair to make sure that order is kept within the meeting, okay?
This determination around disrepute is one that you have determined based on one word.
Huh?
You, in this, uh, this understanding of bringing council into disrepute is what you have ruled based, based on one word. And I actually don't think that's accurate.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right, but you made your point. If you want to, you can sit there and move, uh, whatever you want to do appropriately, as per the code.
I, I was speaking against the motion.
Okay, great, thank you councillor. So I need to get back to this point.
So at this point, you're just going to talk over me, not allow me to have my say?
Councillor, I have the chair, I'm the chair of the meeting and I have the call of the chair, okay?
I've never contested that.
Okay, but you're constantly interrupting me, right?
Because you interrupted me when I was speaking.
Because I called a point of order councillor, right?
Based on one word.
Yeah, and it's, and you haven't withdrawn that word?
No, I haven't.
Okay, great, well, you're bringing councillor, you, you are bringing council into disrepute. There were conflict, there are issues with that. You are saying the staff are not working in a transparent fashion. And I'm saying to you that a budget was exhibited, right?
And you have to work my mouth.
Councillor, the budget was exhibited, which so councillors would have resolved in asking money for a master plan, which went on exhibition. To get, the budget went on exhibition. The staff then conducted a master plan. The master plan was then reported back to council, sorry, that was reported back to council. Councillors in 2020 voted for that master plan. And you're saying, oh, there's been no expenditure of funds or there's no commitment. Why do a master plan and consult with the community if you have no intention of actually doing any work within that master plan?
Mayor, do you understand the difference between a master plan and a formal resolution of council?
Yes, no, sorry, yes, and I can tell you what that is. So the master plan had a formal resolution to adopt it, right?
Right, no funds that were specifically allocated for that. And that is what I'm contesting.
For, so no funds, yes, and at this point in time, no funds have been allocated to go out there and actually build something, right? But what we're saying is we are now taking action to build, to build something. And it's being done in a very transparent way. As councillor Rhodes mentioned, this has been consulted numerous times, numerous master plans. It's been on the budget.
Community asking about, you know, this, this, the, um, the disposal of, of council land and other types of assets in order to balance this out, that suggests to me that there has not been appropriate community consultation or understanding of all of these elements of the project, which was my point in the first place, if you had not interrupted me.
No, but you are saying if you don't understand by bringing this, if you want.
Well, we've just gone on.
I've made it clear councillor, I called a point of order.
That I was at.
I call it no different than if somebody calls a point of order on someone else. What I'm saying to you is that, that comment is not appropriate because the staff have been extremely transparent, right? About how this has been consulted. Simple as that. They have been transparent and I, I have to stick up for the staff on this one. You know, if you want to have a go at them, then I guess you understand I have made my point.
And I think in the explanation of all of this, I have not put staff at the center of where there has been issues in terms of the process around.
But you're saying someone is, you're saying people are being transparent. Who's not being transparent?
There is, I'm sure you can work that out.
No, I cannot. No, I cannot. You're saying, so now you're implying, once again, so who's, so if the staff aren't being transparent, now you're saying councils aren't being transparent?
Well, in this whole process of.
And your best thing is if you just withdraw it, we can move on, right?
I will not withdraw it.
Okay, that's fine. Well, then it gets dealt with accordingly.
Fine.
Can we move on, please?
Yeah, so please, continue.
Considering you've just railroaded everything that I, that contributed, I wanted, a contribution I wanted to make.
It's not called rail, it's called a point of order.
Same difference.
Okay, so no points of orders.
No, 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 hold on, same impact. I, I rephrase that. Same impact.
Yep.
And I find, I, I actually find this whole exchange extremely troubling in terms, if we're going to talk about the code of meeting practice. The role of, of the mayor is to chair the meeting. At, at this point, what we have just been doing is, is arguing from, what you've just been doing is arguing from the chair.
Um, yeah, because.
Which is not within the bounds of the, the role of the chair.
Because I called a point of order councillor and you're, you're refusing to withdraw it and you kept interrupting me and making the point of order. And when the chair rose as per the kind of meeting practice, you continued to interrupt me as at councillor Hagerty.
Well, as the chair, where does that leave us now?
Well, you can continue to make your point, but I just mind you that your comments be in line with the code of meeting practice.
Well, considering that was entirely, you know, that was entirely railroaded, I will leave it at, I, I am not in favor of, of this motion.
Thank you. Are there any other, um, any other points? Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, just a point. Um, in, in the report, uh, it does say that the tendering guidelines recommend that consideration be given to tendering the sale of land in controversial contentious or political circumstances, but those are considered not to apply here. I think given what we just saw in the last fifteen minutes, we might want to reconsider that.
I'm sorry councillor, I missed all that, it echoed terribly back here, a little bit closer to the mic and.
Yep, so in the report, it says, uh, oh jeez, one thousand, one hundred and thirty.
Yes?
The tendering guidelines recommend that consideration be given to tendering the sale of land in controversial, contentious or political circumstances, but those are considered not to apply.
Yes.
I would, given what we've just witnessed over the last fifteen minutes, that this is indeed a controversial, contentious and a political issue.
How's it political?
Councillor, this is not the first time this matter came to council. This matter came to council at a previous meeting where this council authorised me as the CEO to enter into, I'm gonna use the word negotiations with Sporty's to ensure that the best value was obtained. I went about and followed the exact instructions given to me as the CEO by the previous council. If you felt that I should not have been authorised to do that, you could have spoken then. I do note for the record, in fairness, that you voted against that, as did a number of other councillors. But the majority did vote and direct me to take that action, and I did so. And the reasons were given in that report as to why, because Sporty's had submitted a, an offer to us and the reasons why it should have been. So I have every confidence that we have not in any way, uh, taken the wrong course of action. And now, as you had directed of, as council had directed on me, once I had been satisfied of obtaining the best value, that I bring it back to council, which is what I've done today.
Thank you, but my question was about, or my point was about this issue being controversial and contentious, as per the guidelines. But, you know, I'll, I'll be voting against it.
Understand. And again, that's, that's what's available to all council, Liz.
Is any of the further discussion? Council deputy mayor, your hands up, or?
No, yeah, sorry, my hands up, I think we clearly have people who are for and people who are against this motion. We've discussed the life out of it, it's been on the books for a very long time, I'd like to have the motion put, please.
No problems. Alright, I'll now put the motion, um, all those in favour, uh, please raise your hands. Against, declare carried.
Division, please?
All those in favour?
Six.
Six, councillor Hakaneeb's hands up?
Seven.
Those against?
Seven to four. You should say seven to four.
Yep. Thank you everyone, declare the motion carried. And just as before we move into the next item, I'll refer to people, um, who don't know it, code of meeting practice section six point, six point nine. And for those of you who don't have it in front of you, please have a look at it. Alright. Next item is conf, um, I might bring, I might redo conf zero nine first, page one six nine one. Regarding, um, Austro Progress Report.
I'm happy to move the recommendation.
Move deputy mayor, second to councillor Rhodes, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I'll declare that carried. We're now going to conf zero eight, page one two two six, with the recommendation page one two two seven. I'm happy to move a motion. The civic place, early case. One two six six, it's the, uh, one of the addendums, sorry.
Book number five councillor.
Yep, confidentially, five.
Page of book five.
Yep. So.
Recommendations are on one one two seven.
So I'll move point number one. Um, point number two, um, option one. Point number three, um, allocate a maximum of one point five million dollars for the fit out and re-scope accordingly. And, and re-scope accordingly. Point number four, allocate one point five million dollars for improvements to the Whitlam Centre in next year's Capital Works Programme. Point number five, that all staff where possible be located in civic place and council no longer lease external space. That all staff where possible be located in civic place and council no longer lease external space. Where was that? That was point five. Acknowledge that the advice given to council previously and the legal advice associated with it. One point of one, point number three is one point five million. Thank you, that's good. Do you have a second, or? Second deputy mayor?
I need to comment on one of those points.
Yep. Good, any discussion?
Yeah, well, just a question, uh, so Mr Mayor to the CEO. Allocating one point five million, is it in?
Can you speak slower and louder, please? It's just very hard to hear.
Okay. Question is, through you, Mr Mayor to this CEO. Uh, do you think it's possible to do the fit out by allocating only one point five million?
So, at, at the last meeting, you asked me to obtain an independent quantity surveyor's report. Our initial reports had shown that it would be three million dollars to fit it out. The independent quantity surveyor has come back at two point nine million to three million. I honestly can't answer that question on the run. I mean, you're asking me to do fifty percent of what has already been determined firstly by our, uh, people and then secondly by an independent quantity surveyor. I don't know which half of the furniture won't be there, which half of the walls won't be built, so I can't answer that councillor. So, so I have a, I have a concern about that.
So councillor Hagerty, I can answer that for you, and that's why the word de-scope is in there. Because you can buy a chair for five hundred dollars or you can buy a chair for a hundred dollars. And I think working within a budget is very important, that's number one. Number two, when people go to lodge development applications, um, that which William here assesses, um, above a certain value, um, they have to, they have to lodge a report with it from a quantity surveyor regarding the construction costs or the construction investment value. Because based upon that number is the fee that council charges to, uh, as their fees. So when you look at what people are lodging for their childcare centres, they're actually building physical buildings for that money, not just a fit out. And when you look at this, you know, your lighting is already completed, your air conditioning is done, you know, your full structure is done, you're literally talking about gibrock walls, some, some bit of bathrooms, you mean? If you give them three million, you'll spend three million, but we, I'm very confident that it can be done for this amount.
So, well, look, Mr Mayor, I can see your point. So just, uh, say if we start the fit out and one point five million dollars wasn't enough to finish it, so what we will do in this case?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, what's the, the normal way of construction these days is to actually get accurate plans, but it's a different, it's about working backwards, saying here's your budget, you work accordingly. Councillor Goodman's in construction, he can tell you a bit about it if you like.
Oh, I don't know if we can manage, you know, to finish the fit out by one point, one point five million dollars. But the question is, I said, just for instance, in the future, it didn't, you know? It wasn't enough to finish it, so what we have to do? Can we borrow the money again?
I think it's okay.
To finish it? And, uh, and again, uh, number three, I believe, if we can change it to approve the allocation of one point five million dollars. Nobody listening here. Talking to myself.
What was that, sorry councillor?
Okay, number three, if you can change it to approve the allocation of the one point five million dollars uh, for the fit out from the general property reserve to the civic place project as a loan, as a loan. Because the money has to go back as quick as possible once we get the money.
You can't do this alone, can you?
You mean, you mean an internal loan?
Hey, hey, yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I said, the property reserve, internal loan.
Yeah. We, we don't refer to it as a loan because it's our money. It's our money, you know, being used from one account to another, it's not a loan. We do talk about repaying, repaying it in certain.
Oh, well, a different account, I believe, as long as it's different accounts, we have to mention it is as a loan.
We deliberately don't use the term loan because if it's a loan, if I go out and borrow money, I've got to go back to the original lenders and telling I'm borrowing more money. I'm not borrowing more money, I'm using my own money. I, I'd rather not use the term loan.
Yeah, I know it is our money, our money, but it's different account. So it has to go back as quick as possible, so how we can pay it back? So I don't want to direct for ages, ages, years and years, you know, so to pay it back.
The report provides that the payback will occur in one of two ways. Um, if we change the, um, plan and the map on the plan, the contributions plan, then we can then take the money out of contributions, we may, I use the word may, if council approves the change, and then it can be paid back in about six months' time in its entirety. Or alternatively, from, it'll come from the reserves that continually are generated by the business, that go into the reserves, it'll be, and that will take a period of time. Both are in the report.
Yeah, but, but, and again, it's a property reserve, it is a question of maths to get money from this account and use it for a project. So just to be on the safe side, if we can say as a loan will be much protected.
I can't stress you can't use the term loan. We are taking the funds from and we will return the funds too. But if you use the term loan, it will create serious issues for us with the current four lenders we have that are on the project.
What about if the issues arise in the future and say, well, look, you're not allowed to use this money from this account?
That's been checked, we are allowed to use from the count that's specified. The reserves are there.
Can, can I point out there's no, uh, identification from where that money is?
On the amendment, I know, there's a couple of changes that had been made, but if we're going back to the original, um, uh, point three, the original point three sets out from general property reserve to civic project, so it says it there, that has to be in there. Yeah, well.
I think, I think that's the councillor Hagerty said, so from general, so not, not general reserve, the property reserve. That the funds, so maybe put a point, that the funds be allocated from the.
Property reserve.
From the property reserve, so just add that as an extra point at the end, I think it's the easiest way of doing it.
May I ask a question, please chair?
Yes councillor Green?
Um, I'm just a bit concerned about the one point five million.
Hmm.
Um, in terms of that, both the, the report, uh, substantiates the original, um, uh, costing of three, um, so I'm concerned about what can actually be fitted out for one point five. So I'm wondering why we can't, uh, take it to a maximum of two million at least?
What's that, sorry, can it be?
If why we can't, the, the one point five million as an arbitrary number, m- might we be able to in court, to change that to up to two million, the fit out up to two million?
No, I'm, I'm.
I'm just worried that, I'm just concerned that one point five, given that the original costing was three million, the, uh, independent report says, well, basically it's two point nine six. So I'm just concerned about one point five seems to be, um, if I, if I, I don't get myself into trouble, a little harsh. So I'm just, as, as a cut, so I'm wondering if we, you know, could maybe be a, a little bit more conciliatory and raise that to up to two million?
Yeah, look councillor, I, I, I get it, I, I'm, I'm, I'm confident, especially when you look at the DAs that have been lodged, that other, that the private sector is doing when they're lodging them, that the one point five is an appropriate number. I'm also mindful of the significant constraints that we have on our budget and the needs in the community. You mentioned before, you know, the kids in, the kids in Miller have a Michael Wenden Centre that's fifty years old and, and needs money desperately. You know, you asked me, I prefer to put all this money into like Wyndham, Wyndham, the, the Wenden Centre and the Whitlam Centre. Um, uh, so I think we just have to be, you know, we have to work harder, work smarter, and I think council can show what it can be, council can show what it can do. So, um, so I'm, I'm, I'm much more comfortable with that one point five.
Well, look, to be honest with you, I'm not much concerned about one point five billion, councillor Green. For simple reason, because, I don't know if you remember, you weren't there at the time. We started the whole project civic place, uh, eighty, only quite eighty-five million dollars to finish this project. So we end up with more than two hundred million dollars. So if we start with one point five, it wasn't enough, well, I'm not quite happy to ask for more money to finish the childcare centre, as simple as that, thank you.
Yeah, cool. Councillor Hall?
I, pardon me, I don't have a problem with some of your changes. I don't agree with the one point five million. Uh, I believe that council had allocated just around three million dollars. Let's bear in mind, this pro, total project is going to cost or has cost two hundred and twenty million dollars. Are we going to shirk one and a half million dollars just because we think we have a different idea of what the fit outs ought to be? I have no idea what the fit outs ought to be, but if you've estimated that to be three million dollars, I'm pretty sure that those would be correct figures, or reasonably correct figures. If you halve it, I'd love to know the quality of the type of material that goes in there, and that's my concern. If we're going to, the difference as the, the CEO suggested, that we're going to pay this back within six months, that's three million dollars, not one and a half. Are we so stingy about the one and a half million dollars that we need to save this? I don't think so. If we're going to have a quality childcare centre that the whole building has won several awards, we're going to skirt, you know, try to save this money when we know we're going to get it back anyway. In terms of point five, you know, I thought that was going to be the case anyway. All external staff currently in, you know, thirty-five Scott Street, I assume that they were going to move in there anyway, and that would probably save us around two million dollars, except that we've made some agreements with it. Look, I think personally, I do not believe that one and a half million dollars is such a great concern. And Mr Mayor, if you're talking about upgrading the Whitlam Centre, that's going to be pulled down as part of our overall, um, master plan in the near future anyway. So do we really want to spend an exorbitant amount of money on that when it's not absolutely needed? You know, I've, I think the original motion plus your points accept the one and a half million dollars, I'm happy to a, agree with that, but otherwise, no.
Can I have just a quick?
Yes councillor Rhodes.
Um, in answer to councillor Hall's, uh, concerns, yes, we do intend to pay it back. I don't know how we're gonna pay it back in, uh, in any time, specified time because according to the report and according to the business case, the, uh, the payments will be made back in terms of the surplus.
One of two ways, that's one of the two ways. The other way, which is the first way, it says A or B.
To take out.
A says if the plan of it is changed and the market is changed, it will allow us to use the seven twelve contributions, which will take us about six months. To bring it back to council, and if council approve it, then the entire amount can be paid out. then the entire amount can be paid out of the 712 contributions in one hit. That's why it's, that's where the six month comes into it. If the plan is not approved, the back is not approved and the council doesn't approve that it comes out, then it's the long-term payment from the income that's being derived.
So in what you're saying is that council's going to be talking about these figures again in council because you need us to approve. At least this gets the project moving. And in view of the various concerns with councillors, and I'd say that at least on that point, we're moving forward and we should accept this and move forward with it.
My problem is that if I have to sign up a contractor to come in and do the fit out, I have to agree to the price with the contractor before they commence. I can't sign with the contractor who starts the job and then I come back later to see what happens. I've got to have a figure. And if my instructions are a figure of 1.5 million, I have to find the contractor who will do the entire fit out for 1.5 million. And I don't know if I can do that.
Don't worry, we have, our flooring is for free because we have a lot of recycled mattresses now that are turned into pavers, which will be great, which save us a bit of money, yeah? Thank you councillors. Is there any further points? All right, I'll take, I'll have my right of reply then councillors.
I need to comment on number five, Mr Mayor.
Yes, please, go for it.
The issue of number five is that we do still have leases that will run for up to two years. In particular, Scott Street is the main one. By you putting clause five in, I don't quite know what I can do with Scott Street. Now, if I'm stuck with the lease, because we haven't been able to sublease it, I may in fact use it for those two years. There's no point not using it.
Yeah, so no one is saying not to use it.
But that all staff where possible be like...
All right, let me fix, I'll fix up the wording then. That no longer extend any external...
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Yep.
I'm happy with that. That makes, that's a difference.
Yep.
So if I've got existing leases, I see them out.
Of course, yep.
I'm happy with that.
So...
And then there's a problem with one of them.
Which one?
You said about spending money somewhere else.
Whitlam Centre.
They've got the typo there.
Civic Centre...
It's not Civic Centre, you went Whitlam, didn't you?
Oh yeah, Whitlam Centre, sorry, point four instead of Civic Centre, Whitlam Centre.
I should have left it at Civic Centre. I made a mistake. I blew it.
Councillors, I must say, I do, I do at times...
I just want to make sure it uses all the correct words about from general property reserve to civic place project.
Yeah, so...
The funds be allocated from general property reserve to the civic place project. Yes.
Okay. You happy? Cool. All right, so thank you. Councillor, I, you know, Liverpool's a big place. It's very diverse, it's very unique. And I just, I gotta say, I get confused sometimes. Councillor Harrow, you mentioned we shouldn't be stingy. Can I ask, has anyone here used a toilet at Chipping Norton Lakes in the last 12 months? Anyone?
Yep.
You have?
Yeah.
And what did you think of that experience? Huh? Sorry, can you put the mic on, sorry? Sorry, can you put your mic on for the people, councillor Fieldman can't hear you?
So where is this going?
I'm just saying, if you want to talk about, you said not great, right?
I would ask where is this going?
I'll tell you where it's going. It's that if you ask the community now what it's our priority, if we're now just, once again, we're just throwing money around the place, is what it seems, like, oh, we should upgrade this and do that. There is a dire need to upgrade Chipping Norton Lakes toilet facilities, right? There's a dire need to upgrade the facilities in, in what's it called, in the Whitlam Centre. The toilet, at a bare minimum, not even, not even talking about air conditioning, just to use the toilets and bring them up to standard, right? And now we're taking money from general reserve and we're all from the property reserve and we're doing this. So be it, I get councillors that they want to go out there and do this, no problems. But don't, if you've got half a million bucks spare, I would strongly recommend upgrade Chipping Norton Lakes, right? Because that's thousands of people from the community use that constantly, right? The Whitlam Centre, thousands of people are using that constantly. Tomorrow, you can imagine how many people are going to be at the Whitlam Centre, right? Michael Wenden Centre, right? Go and chuck half a million dollars there. If we're feeling generous, councillor Harrow, you know, 230 million, add another half a million bucks, being stingy. Those are the facilities that we need to be spending money on, right? So I strongly advise councillors that to look at your role. You have infrastructure that we are responsible for collectively, that is in a poor state generally across the board. The problem is going to get worse and worse because we have a lot of numerous assets that are declining, significantly declining. And if anybody, and I look forward, if anybody wants to have a constructive conversation about that, let's do so because that's what's needed that we need to be focusing on. So that's why I'm happy with this motion forward to work. And, yeah, I'll spend all 3 million, I'll spend all 3 million dollars at other facilities to improve them and hopefully we'll deal with that in a future meeting. But anyway, I would recommend this and I put the motion to the floor. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion carried. And I would now like to, lastly, wish everyone, all the councillors, pardon? No, that's, no, we did that before.
We did that before.
We did that only because in case we have to go to closed session, no. I just want to wish all the councillors and all the staff and all those who are listening and community members a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Orthodox Christmas and everything else in between. What's Kwanzaa? Is it? Okay, oh, you forgot your, yeah, Kwanzaa. So Happy Kwanzaa, I'll look into what Happy Kwanzaa is, but thank you, your ancestor. I want to wish you all very much. Thank you all very much for a wonderful, wonderful year. And I do want to also, once again, and lastly, congratulate once again councillor Hagerty and thank you, wish you all the very best. All right? Take a bow, take a bow, all of us. And thank you. And I'd like to now declare, oh, councillor Harrow?
I thought we were still talking about an issue that, in confidential...
Oh, sorry, yes, you want to move into closer?
Can you do that? It's going to take maybe 10 minutes, five minutes, 10 minutes at the absolute most.
Yeah, urgent for this meeting, can we deal with the next meeting?
I think it's confidential and...
Bob's saying you want to do this meeting, we can't do it next meeting?
Sorry?
We can't do it at the next meeting? In February meeting? Yeah?
Yeah, we'll do it now.
It's up to councillor.
Come back, have a seat.
I'm happy to do it now.
So councillor Harlow's moving, that we move into close.
No, we're happy to do it for February.
Do it now?
February?
February.
All right, great, thank you. All right, thank you everyone. And now the meeting officially closed. Thank you everybody.